Call the meeting to order for the August 18th Wycomica County Work Session. The first item on the agenda is Legislative Bill 2015-12, which is the Economic Development, Creation of the Economic Development Department, for lack of better words. If you all would like to join us, that'd be great. Just so everybody knows, we have two items on the agenda, and we want to be out of here by 2:00 at the latest.
I was about to say 1:30.
1:30 would be better.
Hey Bob, sounds good to me.
Right.
You're my new best friend.
I think, we'll let you guys take the table. I guess, since the last time we met, when you were talking about this position, these positions, some suggestions were made, such as what the specific responsibilities might be with the Director as opposed to the Assistant. Responsibilities, some of the job descriptions look like they needed tweaking, there wasn't any mention of social media experience or any of that other stuff. So, that's why we're here today. I would assume to see exactly how you're planning to put it all together.
Well, I don't think you're going to require us so much. I mean, we didn't really put social media into it. We have other people within the county that does social media. I mean, through the Civic Center, Kristin and her group out there will do a lot of that, but, so we really weren't requiring social media as a prerequisite. I want somebody that knows how to write grants better and knows how to-
Yeah, understood. I didn't know if social media came into, I mean, this department, I'm assuming, is going to be in charge of economic development, should also include branding of the county, or is that going to be somewhere else? Because you have PR, you have economic development, public relations, and you have grant writing, so I just wasn't sure.
I'll start by saying that, once the office is created, the purpose of it, as you know, and you support it, is to rebrand, market, and promote Wycomica County. What this position will do is, this person will be responsible for helping to attract and retain jobs that are coming to Wycomica County, rebranding what we have, selling what Wycomica County is most noted for, taking advantage of those things that we're good at, and maybe staying away from some things that we're not so good at. But this person is going to have a large responsibility to be the voice of what we sell, how Wycomica County looks. They will be responsible for being in-house, they will be out in the field, they should have a networking with Annapolis and the Governor's Office, they will have an interfacing with council from time to time, so that you'll know what we're bringing in and what we're trying to control. The person who will assist them will have a clerical-type role, an associate. That person will report directly to them, and will be responsible for being a physical presence when they're not in the office. That person should be able to help with one-stop permitting, which is also going to be a part of what this job responsibility is. That person will get to know the county, they will get to know the departments, they will be able to direct traffic, and save time for our consumers for not having to go throughout the county. They'll be able to help them work through the process. The Director will also have a grant component, because the county recognizes there's money that's available that we're not taking advantage of, and they're going to help in that effort as well as those departments who already receive grants. They should be able to help them work through the process as well.
When you say that, Sharon, when you say-
Use your mic, John.
I'm sorry, when you say that, and you say work through the process, so they're not going to actually physically write the grants for them, they're just going to assist them in the application-
No, this person should be able to write a grant, they should have-
Through the whole process?
Through the whole process. They should also be familiar with federal and state regulations as well as county.
Good.
I know that there's been discussions with the City of Salisbury as far as including them into this whole process. Is there any movement on that front?
I believe the county executive has had a conversation, and he can speak to that. There's been no finalization as to whether or not that person will become part of this office. There's no funding for that person in this presentation.
The offer's been made, Jim.
We would hope not.
Yeah, the offer's been made.
But it has been.
The offer's been extended, we have not heard back.
We've made the offer to them.
We've made the offer.
Because I know when we were at the SWED meeting, Tom Stevenson sounded, you know, like, maybe this is a possibility, something we could work together on, so.
Yeah, that offer was extended, we haven't heard back.
Okay.
Yeah, I say social media, you know, if you're going to be marketing the county, you're going to be branding the county, you better sure as heck know about social media, because that's where it all is.
Yeah, we agree with that. We have Tanner Pisa in our office, who is going to do some of that. We also have access to all county employees, and as you know, Kristin and her group at Tourism can also assist until it gets up and running. This is an incubator stage, and so we'll work through it and see where we land. But we think we have what we need in place.
Okay.
Does this diminish the role of SWED?
No, I think SWED, I think SWED is one component. When you look at, I think when you, when you look at economic development, I think you have three essential functions. You retain the businesses, and you nurture the businesses that you already have. That has been SWED's focus, and I think they do a very, very good job of that. You obtain businesses, so, you go steal them from someplace else, essentially. And then you internally develop businesses within the community. So, you know, those three components, I think are critical. I think SWED covers one of those components very well. But obtaining new businesses, reaching out to invite new businesses in aggressively, and then nurturing, incentivizing, looking for funding for startups, new businesses, is the third component. This person, this office would, I think, focus more on the obtaining and development and branding. SWED, we've got to have a very close relationship with SWED. We've invited Dave to set up office in this suite, but I don't think we need to replow that field right now. I think they cover that very well.
Yes, sir. Bob, I want to let you know I saw your sign in Ocean City as we were coming out. It looks good, we're open for business. Sharon, maybe you can answer this.
Okay.
Is this grants administrator going to be available to write grants for all the departments of Wycomica County? I think some of them have their own employees.
I think the person, we hope the person is going to be really busy, but I think with the technology and the skillset that we hope they'll bring, they should be able to assist.
Would they be able to assist the local fire departments in writing grants?
I can't say that, no.
Just asking if that's an option for them.
I would assume it would be an option, yes.
Because there are federal grants available, some of them access those.
You could spend all, you could have a year-round grant writer for the fire departments, there's so much, so I can't concentrate all of them there.
But not everybody's writing grants or asking for grants, so somebody may need assistance.
But there is money available, and that's what we're hoping to tap into, and I think that's going to take quite a bit of their time.
We need to get a grant writer for the fire department.
Probably them.
You done, Larry?
Yes, sir, thank you.
John, in reference to your question, I was at the last SWED meeting, and we, that pretty much was the conversation we had. I think what we came out of that with was, it's going to be real important for the person in your economic office, development office, to know when they need to pick up the phone and call Dave. In other words, when that person walks in with questions about opening a business in Wycomica County, or some of the opportunities, I think there's going to be a line there where the person in your office reaches a level, and they need to say, "Let's get Dave Ryan down here to talk to you." And I think that's what we, that's what we came out of that meeting with, and SWED, I think carries a year-to-year lease also, like what you've set up here. So, I think it's all fluid right now, what we can do in the next year or two or three, to whether, if this works, like we hope it does, and they all work together, maybe at some point in time, it can all become one. We didn't say that's what we wanted at the SWED meeting, but I think that's what the general thoughts are, maybe it'll all work together.
And SWED is privately funded, and this, of course, is a government thing, so we want to help them as much as we can, as well as we want to tap into them, because we've been contributing to them, so.
So, it wasn't any decision made to persuade to move in the office, but SWED is going to have a presence there, and I think that's the important thing, is the person that's in that office knows when it's time to call Dave and get Dave in the middle.
And we hope to be able to represent some of the local commercial realtors, also, as far as buildings that they have available, properties that they have available, and somebody can come in and say, "Well, we may need to call Sperry Van Ness, we may need to call Long and Foster," or whoever, because this is their property.
Maybe we could rent them a space on the wall, hang their sign.
We could rent them a space.
Yeah.
Billboard's property.
Rent them a space.
I guess, you know, a little concerned here. We're expanding the executive office by two positions, and, you know, once you hire folks, it tends to, you know, it's very rare that, you know, the government shrinks. And so, we're expanding this by two positions, and if they're useful, great. You know, but we talked before about, how do you know that they're doing a good job? You know, and once we create this, our role is kind of done. I mean, we can, I guess, cut funding from the office, but we don't really have any control to, you know, if we, you know, if this person isn't effective, and we think, I mean, that's, we don't have much of a say after this, do we?
You-
It's the nature of the charter.
I know. So, it's our chance.
You have the ability to cut the budget by the salary of the person.
I think where that's going to come into play, Mark, is that they're going to have to prepare a budget for next year. Right now, this is piecemeal. The funding, the funding from economic development is funding these two positions. By the next budget cycle, I would expect this job to be somewhere in the budget, similar to the purchasing department.
It will be.
Whereas, it's going to be a separate line item, Mark. And at that point in time, I think you're 100% correct. At that point in time, we really need to evaluate, I'm hoping that we'll get someone in here in time to give us enough time to see how they, their progress, they're progressing, and maybe, maybe at that point in time, we could say, "This department isn't working."
Right, and, you know, we all ran for office as fiscal conservatives to one extent or another, and now we're adding two positions to Wycomica County, so.
But be sure you check your figures, because my government is smaller than it was when I took it over.
Yeah, all right.
You're not on my chopping block, though, don't worry.
Actually, we still have a vacancy in the executive side that we did not fill.
Well, we also said, and we all also consistently said, that we've got to grow our base economically. You can't grow your base, I hope it happens. You've got to make an investment. And that investment either works or it doesn't work, and council's chance to weigh in on that, if they have a difference of opinion with the executive, is in the budget cycle.
And it'd be up to the executive's office to prove to us that it's a valid department, and I'd rather see, and I know there's arguments on both sides of the issue of a public information officer, but most elected officials want to speak for their self, and that's why I didn't agree with a public information officer position. So, I'd rather see this position implemented instead of what we had.
Well, I think every person who runs for an elected office oftentimes says, "We want to create jobs," and so this is one of those initiatives that will help us to do that.
We don't want to be-
We want to create and maintain.
We're not creating for the government.
Not creating for us, but we want to create them economically to stimulate the town.
It's like the impact fee, I mean, we all have seen how much, and hopefully by next meeting, Jack will have those figures for us as to exactly how much we've done. But when you figure this council alone has contributed and actually backed almost 147 permits being pulled in the last, excuse me, no, 178 permits, I'm sorry, in the last year, six months to a year since we've all taken office, that's quite an accomplishment. I mean, that's, you know.
Well, and I agree with you on that, I mean, but there's a more direct line between the impact fee and home construction than there is between, you know, someone sitting in an office or going out. You know, I mean, it's a lot harder to quantify the results from a position like this. I mean, you can obviously list, you know, 100 different things that they did during the year, but those are inputs and not outputs, and so, I mean, I know you're aware of it, but, you know, that's my concern, is what output are we going to get for this?
Well, we have to find a way of measuring that.
Sharon, you have it right in front of you, the list, the job description. I know under the essential functions, it lists grant applications. Under job summary, there's no mention of grant writing, okay? Just so you know.
Okay.
Just to tweak it, I'm sure they just, whoever put it together, kind of like, but I think there definitely should be some mention of grant writing, since that's the title, Director of Business Development and Grants. I also, again, think that in the essential functions, and I'm going to tell you this because I wrote it down, but I don't want to have to reread it all again. I wrote down, "Economic Development, Grants, and Marketing." Those are three issues that I believe may not have been reflected under essential functions, okay? There is federal grant application, so that's there.
Mm-hmm.
That is in there, okay? But there may not be mention of specifically economic development and marketing. I mean, if this is what we're going to do, I like to, if it's not in the job description, where the heck are you going to put it?
It says, "Knowledge of Federal and State Grant Processing."
Yeah, I backed up on that, yeah, the grant's in there, thanks. Yeah, it is in there, but the, I don't know if the-
Develops and implements marketing strategies that ensures the highest level of county services.
Okay, all right, forget all that.
How well did you read this?
I know in the summary-
By utilizing social media.
In the summary, just, I think you might want to put a mention of grants in there. And I think also, under education and experience, you ought to put marketing in there, some type of marketing experience. And I'm just going to tell you, you don't have to agree with it, but that's what I think. And I also think there ought to be something in there about computer internet skills, et cetera, et cetera. I can't imagine no one has that in this day and age.
Right.
I know.
So, anyway, I guess that was the whole idea, was kind of just touch base with you, and again, you say that by the next budget cycle, this will be transferred into an official department.
Mr. Kennedy, please.
Excuse me?
Can I interrupt?
Yes, you may, because what are we going to talk about? Charter?
The Executive's Office is already preparing a budget bill amendment to go along with this, to introduce next time, because when you guys appropriated money, you just appropriated money.
Exactly.
But now it involves salaries, capital, and operating. So, the budget bill amendment will come back with dividing that into categories, because you have to appropriate the salary so they can pay the person. If they're starting before next fiscal year, you've had to have appropriated salary money for that. So, it'll be broken down as salary, operating, capital, and the grant to SWED, which is the same thing we do every year.
Great, thank you.
It'll essentially set it up the next time to look like a department. Those line items will be there like any other department.
Great, 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 great. That's what we all, what we all want to see. Any other questions? Thanks, Sharon.
In an effort not to derail the conversation and the project, how many local grants do we do now?
I don't know. We do grants at the-
Have a schedule in the budget.
Do you think, do you think there are some?
Oh, yeah, the State's Attorney's Office does grants, and receives grants, Sheriff's Department, local management. There are grants out there. Yes, there are a number of local grants out there.
And I mean, LME itself generates a boatload of grants, a lot of grants.
Yeah, but they're state and federal.
This is county department.
Am I getting a consensus that everybody says, "Go ahead with this, then, you're okay with these two positions?"
Sounds good to me.
You okay?
Foundation-
We're good to advertise.
I'll have, okay.
John, we're good to advertise.
Everything's good?
Everything good to advertise for these positions, Ben?
Thank you.
Okay, great. And I know next week will come, or next time will come back, actually.
The actual bill itself.
The actual bill itself will come next week.
The bill's already been introduced, your public hearings next, council meeting.
Okay. Okay. The only other part is a discussion on the Law Department as far as where we're headed with the Law Department. Kind of anxious to try to see what we're going to do.
Okay. Actually, I'm quite happy with what we've, just to turn on and turn off that easy, you know, I just get started, it doesn't turn off. We're very happy with what the Law Department is, that we have now. I mean, we feel very confident, of course, with Maureen and Rachel. What we'd like to do is to probably keep things going somewhat what they are, but go ahead and start subbing out some of the work. We've got some backup work, I think that we'll all recognize, like the dog laws, things like that, that we were trying to get together a year and a half ago. We need to get this out, and we're going to advertise for another firm that would be able to come in here and catch up some of the slack work that we're not going to be able to get done. Maureen will continue to counsel, I mean, excuse me, to actually concentrate mostly on, you know, Wycomica County business, our resolutions, our bills, and the things that we do on a daily basis here. But, actually-
And some specialized work that may come along, you know, things that I would call transactional, where it's sort of out of the ordinary scope. Not really. The only thing we've really contracted out was the FOP, and that was, that's so specialized.
And we have outside, we have separate bond council.
We have separate bonds. But, you know, there are certain things that come along that aren't what I would call in the routine nature of the county's business, so we may be better off contracting out for those specific activities, and, but keeping the normal scope of legal work for the county comprised as it is right now, and reviewing, and reviewing the broad spectrum, if you will, of the work that's coming through, through the Law Department right now. We had started an initiative of trying to establish, you know, standardized contracts and agreements, that type of thing, so I think we can, we can move that along and see whether or not we can create even more efficiency in that regard.
John, I guess maybe efficiency is the issue. To what degree, I mean, what is your budget for contracting out? How much do you have budget for contracting out? Because really contracting out, I don't think that means contracting out all your legal work, especially when you already have a law department.
No, we're not even contemplating.
Why would you contract out dog laws?
Well, considering Maureen's schedule, so busy answering your questions, answering our questions, that I know that you haven't had a chance to finish that the other year that we started on with the dog.
Well, you might be busy because we don't have, you might be busy because we're missing one attorney.
I'm not planning on hiring that attorney back. I'm happy with just, right now, the way we are with two, and if Maureen feels that she needs a third one to come in and do something, that's why I would put somebody on a contract. We would advertise for an hourly rate, try to figure out what that person would be charging us, and then go ahead and use their services.
Maureen, I understand, I think, what you want, and you've not said it yet, and correct me if I'm wrong, we've got a very capable attorney sitting here with experience that worked under somebody that's done a good job. I think what you're trying to say is in specialized incidences, is that what you're trying to, you know?
Funky Bolton who did some work for us.
If we run into a situation with a transportation issue, or a employment issue, that somebody in our, that we're better off to go that route than we are to leave it in-house and let the work that they need to be doing on a daily basis go, is that what you're trying to say?
Well, I think, well, yeah, yeah, it is. Let me get back to what Mark was saying.
And environmental issue's a good one to take.
Exactly, environmental or something like that.
Employment issues is another.
To Mark's point, if you, I think what we're trying to do, or what Bob's trying to do, is somewhat the same thing that we're going to be doing with this new business office. You know, that is, you know, we've got to, I don't think Bob wants to immediately hire another attorney. I think what he wants to do is he wants to leave the personnel who are in place in place, see to what extent we can create more efficiencies, then if we find along the way that we do need arms and legs, quantify exactly what we need and how often we need that. And I think he prefers doing that to immediately replacing a full-time, a full-time vacancy. So, in fairness to the executive, he needs, he needs to be convinced that we're being as efficient as we can be.
Are we seeing any escalation immediately, unfortunately you haven't put it out in bid, is there going to be any escalation in the budget for the attorney's office by doing this, or don't you?
I don't foresee any, you know.
I wouldn't think so.
Actually, I feel like by saving the retirement benefits, insurance, that type of thing, it will hopefully be a savings.
Because, I mean, contracting out is supposed to be for special, you know, for special circumstances. It's not supposed to be standard operating procedure. It sounds like it's going from special circumstances to standard operating procedure. Law Department, I think we gave you this two weeks ago, which was a summary sheet of evaluating the costs of in-house attorneys as opposed to contracting out, and the cost of contracting out does not, is not the most economically beneficial way to do it. Having in-house attorneys, from these numbers here, is sort of a proven fact based on history, that it saves the county money as opposed to contracting out.
You know, I saw that, but I didn't have any references to where those numbers came from.
They came from the Law Department.
Okay, well.
So, if you, I mean, I was, you know, you can review that with them in the Law Department. Because, I mean, I was surprised. I really thought that maybe, you know, maybe that'll work, but in looking at this, even with benefits and et cetera, you know, you're paying a combined, a lower combined total cost per attorney than going out and, you know, bringing somebody in for $250 an hour or $300 an hour. We know what the heck it costs us to do arbitration.
Sure.
We know what it costs us, whereas in-house is a little bit easier. Now, granted, if it's not within their expertise, and they acknowledge that, that's when you would hire out. But for basic standard processes, I think we need to consider an in-house attorney. And on top of that, I think the council would like to seriously know who the next county attorney is going to be, because we have to have a county attorney.
Well, and the charter does require that, right, Department of Law. And, you know, right now, I, it's just best, you know, let us go ahead and make those decisions, and we'll get back to you.
Well, I understand that, but that's why, I mean, and I appreciate, Bob, I understand what's on your plate, but it has to come to a conclusion, because you have a department in total limbo. And I don't want to lose-
I wouldn't call it in limbo, but I, you know, I-
I'd say it's in limbo, nobody knows what's going where, and you're going to have people that are going to be leaving. You're going to have people that are going to be leaving because there's just total unrest.
Okay.
That develops in any department. If the department as a whole is not quite sure as to what's developing, they're not quite sure what to do. It's instability.
I understand, but this meeting needs to be in a closed session with personnel rather than on TV, okay?
Well, we could close it now if you'd like to, we could do that.
You know, that's fine, but I'm not going to get on TV here arguing, or even getting into a discussion.
I'm not arguing, Bob. I'm discussing, you know, what really needs to be done.
Who would make the decision between your office and the Law Office of when it needed to be contracted out, a project, so to say?
That would probably be done in conjunction with Maureen, because she would know what degree of expertise she has and the other attorney in her office.
I don't foresee it happening routinely, Joe.
No, I don't either. I don't think we're going to have somebody that we're paying all the time. How do you see that? I don't know. I mean, because it depends on what develops in the future.
I think the workload's getting instrumentalized, it is.
Well, I guess my question is, we had, you know, the third attorney, full-time.
The third attorney, though, remember, now, you were on council at the time, the third attorney was hired as a prep for Mr. Baker leaving. It was not hired because we needed three attorneys at the time, now, you know, maybe we feel we do, but that's something we all have to take up in a budget session.
Okay, well, I mean, you know, I'm just trying to kind of clarify here, so, so, we had, but for, I mean, for a while there, we had, you know, we had-
Almost a year, I guess.
A year. We had, you know, a full-time attorney, I would assume that they had a full workload. So, now, we're talking about having two attorneys and replacing that person who had a full workload with contracting. I mean, you feel that would be more economical to contract out that work than having an attorney in-house? I mean-
Well, as Wayne said, we want to try to streamline some things, like the leases, that we use all the same leases, and that, this is used parked and wrecked, when somebody rents a ball field, that it doesn't have to go through Law Office every time. I know they're supposed to review contracts, but if the contracts are set up so that you just fill in the blanks, like ABC company wants to borrow or rent a ball field from us, or a pavilion, it doesn't need to go through Office and then everything be done that way. My feeling is that we can agree to have certain things boilerplateed, and that's it.
So, there'd be a reduction in the-
Some of the mundane stuff, I mean, you know, the-
We, we try to meet with Maureen, I was trying to meet with Maureen almost every day, but sometimes my schedule- but sometimes my schedule doesn't allow that, and sometimes Maureen's doesn't. But we try to keep a very close watch on the, the priority legal work that is in process, those things that rise to a level that, hey, we need to get something done, we need to get it done very quickly. And we, what I would say to you is that, again, it, in the executives, you know, arguing for the executive, the executive, I think, needs to feel more comfortable that on a routine basis, that level of prioritized work rises to a level that a third attorney is needed. Bob isn't indicating, and has never indicated, uh, to me that he has any, uh, lack of confidence in the people who we have in that department. Personally, I think they're excellent people, and, uh, they have, they have more than a full workload right now. But, but, but there may be, for instance, just to toss this out, uh, our law department is very, very heavily involved in collection work. You know, you can make an argument that collections work really doesn't belong in, in the law department, it belongs in the finance department. You know, where I came from in the private sector, my finance department collected overdue bills. So.
You didn't have a law department, did you?
I didn't have a law department.
Did you have a law department? You had a lawyer's retainer.
No, I had a law department. We were a hundred and twenty-eight million dollar enterprise. I had five attorneys.
We're short some then.
But anyway, um, so.
We have you as one director.
Again, I think we need to look at, okay, what are the kinds of works that are flowing through? For Bob's benefit, what kind of work is flowing through our law department? Is there a different way to handle that work? Collections. Can it go to finance? Can we standardize agreements, contracts to a further extent than we have? And determine whether or not, uh, we need X number of hours of continual daily legal, um, representation inside the county. Or, uh, once we do that, are we cycling through with what I call transactional, um, events? You know, like the arbitration, or, um, what was another one that we had where we had to go for outside counsel?
FOP.
Funky Bolton, and Silver City lease.
Right, so, so, again, Bob's trying to be entirely comfortable that adding the cost of another full-time attorney is fully warranted at this point in time. So it's not, doesn't have anything to do with a lack of confidence in the people who we have.
You know, what, what I hear.
I would, uh, I, I think I'd recommend that we give it six months, let you guys figure out that need, and that brings us into budget season. I think it's perfect timing right now. And then, uh, when budget season comes up, then we make that determination if, if that temporary fix, I'd call it the more temporary of the two, of contracting, is working. And if not, then we, I think it's time to decide whether we need to do a permanent third attorney.
Do we really need six months? How much time do you need?
I think six months is fair, and it times out right with the budget. I don't know.
Much time do I need, Maureen?
I don't think you want me to answer that question.
Sorry, I answered. Uh, Councilor Hawley?
Yeah, well, you know.
I can make it a priority.
Joe?
I think one of the things that Bob's probably had to respond to is, um, um, not long ago, we had a letter from somebody that said Worcester County's got one attorney, how come we have three? Well, what we didn't know is Worcester County uses a different attorney for their planning and zoning and probably other, that's what they kind of do. They kind of subcontract a lot of their stuff out. I'm fully vested in thinking that we need and should have in-house attorneys. I mean.
Agreed.
We have too, too, too many questions too often, I think, all of us at different times, and today's been a good example of that. You know, we don't know if we're going to be here from 10 o'clock to two or 10 o'clock to four. But I also understand, and I understand your point, that we need to make sure that they feel secure in what they're.
Two different, there's two different arguments. I don't have any problem with trying to evaluate how many attorneys we want. That's one argument. The other argument is we're going to do the ones we have right now. We're going to do the department that we have right now.
I think there also needs to be some consideration to the fact that, um, with the former attorney leaving and all that knowledge going away, the Maureen and her staff, Maureen has one paralegal, the other person is a secretary. Uh, and she has a fairly new attorney. So the learning curve for the other person, Maureen is still the person that has to train that person to county processes. Even if with a background of the law degree, there's still our county processes, and she's the person that's going to have to do that. So I think rather than her jumping into having to work somebody else through that right now, she needs to be able to settle her department, and they decide what can be done by each attorney. I think it would be helpful to her department.
To Joe's point, we, we, we met, um, with Frederick County, was it Frederick County? Uh, they had just changed to a executive form of government, and somehow we got off on law. And we posed the question, how many attorneys did they have? They have five attorneys.
It's their budget, though.
Well, the work is still, the work is still the work.
No, budget, county budget.
Frederick, Frederick thinks that's five.
Yeah, it's a bigger county. I'm going to agree with six months. I agree with Matt.
Well, you know, to answer your question, we go into closed session, I can tell you what I want to do, okay? But as far as Matt, I agree with Matt, to determine if we're going to need a third attorney, or, or how we're going to handle that. And that's something that's going to be a budget decision that we're going to have to do with you all.
The rub here is the fact that the council itself specifically depends on this for our day-to-day operations, as, as do you.
Quite aware.
It's a little bit different than Rhodes or any other department. We have to make sure that if we're getting stuff up here, it's going to get up here in a timely fashion and can be addressed. So that's, that's why we have a little bit more vested interest in this than anything else. Any other comments in open session before we entertain a motion to go to closed session for 20 minutes?
Mr. Kramer can tell me whether he agrees or not, but normally if we go in a closed session, it has to be, uh, announced in the open legislative session, which we've passed.
All right, we're going, we're going, we're going in two weeks then. We're going in two weeks. I, I, well, I mean, I can, we can go back into, we can go back into legislative session, but I really. You, you have that option.
You have that option.
Entertain a motion to go back to legislative session.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Posed, motion carried. Now legislative session, entertain a motion to adjourn so that we can go into a closed work session.
So moved.
Second, in favor?
Aye.
Posed, motions carried. We're now in a closed session.